Okay, Mr. Mayor, you're live. I don't have the questions from previously, the previous meeting, sorry.
Well, I'll ask them to send them again.
Yes. But you're live.
I'm live?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, hello everybody. I'm sorry, I forgot the link on our website and the link that some of you got from various places apparently wasn't working. So we've canceled that meeting, restarted the meeting. And we've, the link on our website where it says Agenda now works. And a number of you have gotten the link. And I see we have six, seven attendees at the moment. However, some of you sent questions before and those questions are gone. So please submit your questions again. I do have one question that was sent to me earlier today and I'm going to start with that question. It comes from Catherine Corrigan, former principal of Hampstead School. And her question, and I hope she's listening, I hope she's one of the eight attendees. Her question had to do with a skate park for skateboarder boarders in Hampstead. She's wondering if we had ever considered one and what can be done to try to get one. So the answer is yes, we have briefly talked about that, I don't remember how long ago. And our concern was accidents. We were concerned that people might hurt themselves. It's safer to do skiing, to use boards when you're skiing on those terrain parks because you're falling on snow. On hard concrete, we have concerns about that. Nevertheless, Catherine, if you want to get a petition or letter signed by several residents all saying that they would like a skate park in Hampstead, we'll certainly look into it. I know there are skate parks in various places around, but so far none in Hampstead. We'll be happy to look into it if we get enough requests. So if you know people, have them either send us emails, letters, or easier, all sign one petition or letter and we will look into it. Okay, and now we're up to questions on that were sent in, we're at nine attendees. Okay, the first question comes from anonymous. "On behalf of the residents of Belsize, the question is addressed to Mayor Steinberg and Cheryl regarding Belsize Circle. As you recall, there were contentious discussions regarding the plans for Belsize Circle that led to a meeting at Hampstead Pool last summer. The residents of Belsize left the meeting with a firm commitment to be consulted prior to the commencement of work. We noticed today markings and demarcation stakes in the ground and are curious to know when plans show these necessary expenses to the residents of Hampstead." Just give me one second to, and I'll be back with an answer. Okay, here's, my wife Doris was in charge of beautification when that meeting was held. And, and plans were made in conjunction with what had been discussed with the residents. Basically, a path that goes through the park, winding path going straight across. Well, winding and straight. It goes from the pathway that goes from Eden to Belsize Circle and then from, and then it ends. So you can cross the street and continue to Applewood Park and so on. But it's not a straight line, it's curvy because it looks better. There were supposed to be plantations beside the pathway. And that was basically it. Residents wanted lots of green space and the agreement was fine. There will be lots of green space, the only beautification was going to be that. However, for reasons that I, well, basically because of an email that was sent from Counselor Etary to many, many people, not just the council, the Director General, the finance people and others, which suggested that my wife may have inappropriately approved some large amount of money, I think $21,000 or something. Either her or, or the Chief Consultant Mala who was designing these things. Of course, this was proven to be totally false, I just want to make that clear. This was only after an external audit that Counselor Etary convinced. The audit made it very clear, while it's confidential, I can't go into the exact details, but I can certainly mention a few of the major points. One was that the chief volunteer had done an incredibly good job because Hampstead, as many people know, has sank for on the highest level of beautification award in the province. Only 11 other towns in the entire province have it and none on the island of Montreal. That is what the chief volunteer, otherwise known as my wife Doris, accomplished. Nevertheless, this email country was so vile and so wrong that my wife said, "That's it, I am stepping down." So she is no longer in charge of it. Plans that were done last year are supposed to be followed in every single green space in the town. Whether that is happening or not is a matter to be determined. But the plans were left, all the detailed plans, pictures, everything. And the town under Public Works is supposed to be executing this. That's the basic story, so I can't tell you what Public Works is doing. My wife is no longer involved and I have to assume they're doing what they were instructed to do, which is to follow the plans. So what people were told last year is what should happen this year. And that's as much as I can say on that subject. Okay, now let me just get rid of that.
Can I, Mr. Mayor, is there a room for counselors to throw one item here or just a comment?
You mean a question?
No, no, I said can I make a comment on your explanation or answer to the question?
Yes, of course.
Without going to the, to what led to the, Doris resigning from the position, I believe, and I am not going to that item, I think the, if we were properly organized, we should have continued the file one way or another and to whatever was promised to the resident should have happened regardless if Doris is there or somebody replaced Doris. I don't want to go to the item of why Doris is not there. Obviously, when she was there, the beautification was taken care, we all agree and we all know. All I'm saying is, if that was promised to the resident, we should have proceeded with providing what was promised.
Yes, I agree with you and that is the plan. And ultimately, our Director General, Richard Sun, is responsible for making sure that all the plans from last year are followed this year. In fact, I know he has sent a directive indicating there are to be absolutely no changes. The plans are to be followed. After that, it is Public Works under Eve and under him Pino and under him Tony, who are responsible for making sure that this is what happens. So yes, I agree with you, that's what's supposed to happen. If it doesn't happen, well, I'm glad to point out is many, many residents know that my wife was involved in this. They should also know that she isn't involved now, so she should not be blamed if certain things don't happen. They happened very well from 2008 to 2018, a decade when she was in charge of all this. And of course, just in case anyone doesn't know, not only was she not paid a penny, but she often used out-of-pocket money for various things herself. Okay, moving on. Okay, I just have a note from Catherine that she made it onto our meeting, but I've already given the answer to that, okay. And I, another one from her, okay, thank you, so I presume she heard my response. I just have to get to the next question. Okay, I don't think that's a point. Okay, anonymous was, they're talking about the question posed as about the current plans for the circle, not the investigation. The answer is the exact same plans that we discussed last year, and I was at the meeting too, are what's supposed to be executed. But nevertheless, I don't know what's actually going to happen because I'm not on top of that. And I mentioned the people who are responsible and are on top of it. If something goes wrong and it's not the right path and it's not the right flowers or whatever, certainly you can get in touch with me and let me know as soon as possible and then I'll certainly be on top of it. But now I just have to assume that what was requested is being done. Anonymous, you haven't answered the question, Cheryl and yourself presented plans that were incomplete and a starting point, okay?
Mayor Steinberg, may I step in for a second?
Certainly.
Okay, so I, what the concern is for the residents around it is that if their initial plan that was shown was a lot of flowers and they didn't want that. So basically what has come up is that we had decided at the end with everybody's approval that all we'll do is do a path between, through the center of the garden with flowers just on the edge, which is what most of the residents wanted. That is where it's been left, there's nothing else that's going to be planned. There's no flowers the way we showed it, so it's just going to be a path to go through so people could go with their bicycles or walk and flowers along the edge, which leaves a large amount of space for the children of the area to play on the grass. That, that's, I think, is the answer they're looking for.
Thank you, that, that's us, that is exactly how I recall the meeting as well. Okay, next question, anonymous again. "Will something be done to remove the purple graffiti on the pole on the corner of Ellardale and Queen Mary?" Oh, well, thank you, now that we know about it, of course, we'll do something about it. Richard, you'll make sure that we do something about the purple graffiti on the pole at the corner of Ellardale and Queen Mary?
Absolutely, I'll take note of it. Yeah.
Okay. I get to the question. It's from anonymous, I presume the previous anonymous. And it says, "Absolutely, thank you, Counselor." And another anonymous weighs in with, "You are correct." Okay, so it looks like the residents around Belsize and Cheryl's explanation was dead on. Okay, anonymous, not about your wife, this is a city, not a family business. My goodness, not to give credit to someone who has devoted all this time and effort and brought us to such a high level of beautification, which is recognized and appreciated by numerous residents in the town because when I go for walks with my wife, people more often than not come up to her and not me and thank her for what she's done for the town in terms of beautification. It's incredibly popular and I will mention it every chance I get. And this business about a family business is insulting because it is not a, there's no money, no profit being made, no money whatsoever involved. And the allegations, as I mentioned previously, about something wrong going on, allegations that were absolutely found to be false, is, is also very unfortunate. But yes, I will mention.
Given that you keep mentioning my name and I'm really trying to stay out of this, but my job as finance is to make sure that we have proper controls in place. And I don't want to take away from any of the work that Doris did, but there, there were no proper controls in place or there were problematic controls in place and the audit denoted, noted those. So don't start going on my case about, you know, vile letters and everything was unsubstantiated because that's not the case. It was not vile, it was clear and council unanimously backed bringing in the auditors based on what I recommended. And the auditor didn't come back and say, "Hey, you're retarded." They said, "Hey, you know what, there are issues with controls." And you might not find controls that interesting or that important, but from a finance point of view, controls are important and they have to be followed. It's nothing to do with Doris, it has nothing to do with her heart being in the right place and there's nothing to do with her doing a lot of volunteer work. It's just the boring stuff of running a town requires financial controls.
And Counselor Etary, if that was your only concern, you should have had the brains to bring it up quietly with, if you want the whole council, but no one beyond the council. Especially, especially, I'm not finished, you'll get your chance again, in the meantime, allow me, thank you. Especially when you mentioned Doris and Mala by name in the context of inappropriately authorizing $21,000 in expenditures. And you eventually found out that it was Richard who authorized them. Had you done this quietly, you would have gotten, you would have gotten, don't talk over me, you would have gotten the truth, the last counselor who talked over me ran for mayor and lost. Don't talk over me, whether you plan to run for mayor or not, just don't talk over. I'm, that's your business. So as I'm saying, the proper procedure would have been to quietly do that, not in an email that went to the finance department, not in an email that dictated that effective immediately, these are the things that will be done, things that had no, none of your business whatsoever. And, and the, and while you convinced the counselors to have an external auditors do the report, they found nothing inappropriate whatsoever, except they recommended that we should have somebody on staff, like a green foreman, who could approve these things so that Richard at his higher level wouldn't have to do it. But they acknowledged that Richard doing it at that level was perfectly acceptable. And so let's just be clear and leave no doubt in anyone's mind about what went on. As for a green foreman, we've been trying for years to get a green foreman. And I told council and I reiterate that we have to be prepared to pay a lot of money to get a green foreman. And I just spoke to Richard the other day about it again and I said, "We need a green foreman and we'll pay whatever we have to pay." Of course, council will have to agree to that. But in the meantime, we have lost the best free service we've ever had in this town. And that's the case and it was lost because of your vile email. An email that lawyers have, is actionable if we choose, or rather if my wife chooses to go that route. Right now, the letter, the email has not been made public. But I would advise you to stop trying to defend yourself because what you did was indefensible. Okay, now we will move on.
No, I'm sorry. This, you know, I was not looking to pick any fights with you and I let you go on with the first time and I just let it slide because I just want peace. But you cannot attack me in public and you cannot attack me and say that what I did was wrong. At the end of the day, there was a PO, there was no PO on a, on $32,000 payment. And when you say that Richard approved it, he approved it after the fact, he didn't approve it before the fact. And the way we usually do things is we approve something and then the work gets done. Not the work gets done, we get a $32,000 invoice and then we approve it after the fact. So it's not, there's nothing criminal, I've said it a thousand times, there was nothing nefarious, there was nothing ill-intent or bad intent on anybody's part. But there were a lack of controls and it's my job to make sure that finance is controlled properly. That's it.
Okay, in that case, in that, okay, in that case, Counselor Etary, let me point out to you that you have been told, but choose to forget, that there are many cases where invoices and POs are approved after the fact, including for the external auditors that did that audit that you wanted as one example.
No, the contrary, we give a PO, that's not the way it works, you know, that's not the way it works. You give a PO and a PO has a particular amount. And if you happen to go over that amount because there's too much work or whatever, then you come back to the manager and the manager approves it, if the person has spending authority. This never went out to a PO for $32,000. It came back and it was spent and it was spent in a way that shouldn't have been done. And so it's not that somebody tried to steal any money and it's not that anybody tried to do anything wrong, but at the end of the day, it wasn't done properly and the important thing is to have proper controls. If you want, if people want to take that as a personal rebuke, okay, well, it's nothing to do with that. But the fact of the matter is, the facts stand that you have to have real controls in place and, and that's what finance is supposed to do. If you want me to close my eyes and say, "Hey, you know what, $32,000 gets, you know, invoices for $32,000 or $20,000 or whatever come in whenever they want and we just kind of pay them after the fact without having authorized them in advance, that's not the way business is done in this town."
Thank you very much for telling us how business should be done in the town and how in fact it is done in most situations. But I repeat, you know perfectly well that there are cases where it doesn't work that way and nothing was done inappropriate and for you to write an email to numerous people instead of only to members of council and for you to put in that email that you believe that either my wife Doris or Mala inappropriately caused this money to be spent and furthermore should repay the money, go read your email again and don't try to tell me it was perfectly okay and all you were doing was pointing out a little control problem, oh no. You, Counselor Etary, you, Counselor Etary had no authority, you still have no authority and didn't have authority over then to give directives to the members of council, the members of finance. You do not have, and that's exactly what you did. And in a minute, if I can find it, I will read your email in public so that people can see what you said because you're not going to twist the truth. So I may find that later and if I do, I'll spread to you. Because I'm not letting this slide. You cannot go and say, "Effective immediately, you people on this email will do the following." Only I as a mayor can do it, you as a counselor cannot. We wasted another $5,000 having a lawyer come in and explain to us what a mayor can do and what counselors can do. And surely by then you should have known. And then we just recently had another external lawyer come in again because you wanted to know whether I could do some things and you found out after 45 minutes of non-stop badgering that external lawyer and all the members of council know it, they were all there and heard it. It still came out, "I've done nothing wrong, my wife has done nothing wrong and I will never let anyone imply or suggest anything of the kind." I'm about to read you and Joel Goldenberg can print it in this newspaper and then Counselor Etary, you can deal with the fallout.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but is this, is this absolutely necessary? This is getting into personal rebukes here, let's, let's get back to this of operating the town. I'm sorry, but this is just uncalled for.
Counselor Buttoning, if Counselor Etary wants to apologize right now.
This is not a, apologize, this is not a.
Otherwise, he will have to hang with his own words. Next time, he should think.
This is not a therapy session.
Mr. Mayor, let's go ahead, please, enough is enough, thank you. Let's go ahead with the agenda, enough is enough. Thank you.
I noticed the dead silence on the part of council, all right.
There's no dead silence for me, let's go forward, please. Let's go ahead with the council agenda or the questions or whatever, but let's proceed.
Very well, for now we'll proceed. Anonymous is back. "Come back to the resident like you committed, you wasted money last year, not acceptable. Frankly, I haven't got a clue what you're talking about." Mr. and Ms. Anonymous.
Why are we accepting questions from anonymous?
We're not, if they write questions, it makes no sense, I can't.
No, but why, why, why shouldn't the person identify themselves when they raise a question?
That's a good point. In every other council meeting, question period on the island, people have to identify themselves.
Well, why not?
I'm very generous.
Why don't we have that rule as well?
If the counselors would like that rule, effective next meeting, we will not accept any more anonymous questions.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, other counselors?
A person should be brave enough to raise a question, they should be brave enough to identify themselves.
I agree with you, that's two votes, do we have some more votes from counselors? Are there any counselors who want people to identify themselves?
I agree with Counsel Schaefer, I think that people should identify themselves.
Okay, that makes three of us, do I have a fourth? Am I to assume that the silence from counselors Goldmax, Buttoning, El Fassi and Etary don't want?
There's no, no, I do know, there's no, no, there's no silence for me, I don't want it. It also gives the opportunity.
It also gives the opportunity for somebody to ask a question without fear of retribution. People do that when they go to the rental board, people do that when they call Service Canada, people do that when they call Revenue Quebec. There is ways to make requests or call and you're anonymous without divulging information so that complaints, questions or suggestions can be answered. People sometimes don't like the limelight, some people don't like fear of retribution. So no, I will allow questions for anonymous. I fully agree that everybody's voices should be heard, whether you say it, who you are or not. When people are walking around. Light on Mister Schaefer one second. Let me finish, please. When people are walking around downtown protesting and their masks are covered and their faces are covered, they're all anonymous, but they have the right to say and do something. So residents, whether they're tenants, whether they're homeowners, whether it's anybody, they have the right to ask a question. And if they want to choose to be anonymous, they could, they could be anonymous. Like I said, some people don't like the limelight, some people are fear of, or some retribution. And some people just don't want to be bothered about typing in their name, so automatically by default it logs in as anonymous.
Save and accept that when someone is anonymous, you don't even know if the person is a resident.
It doesn't matter.
Yes, it does. If the person is not a resident, then that person doesn't have the same interest.
If the mother of a resident chooses to ask a question, she's not allowed?
I can tell you very well that there's many municipalities that people have to identify themselves. And you know that yourself.
We're a stentle of eight thousand people, two thousand and some odd homes. Honestly, we're not the city of Montreal. That's my point.
No, we're not Bay Dirfi with three thousand people and Montreal West with five thousand people. Or any of the half the municipalities, submerged suburbs with less people than Hampstead does. No, no, that's really not it. And our bylaw requires at regular meetings when people used to come and we had live meetings, people had to identify themselves, name and address. Now, I've been very generous, I've allowed anonymous questions. But I know that there is no other town, no suburb, no submerged municipality on the town that accepts anonymous questions. In one case reported in the suburban, somebody wanted to use just an initial and the last name. And that wasn't even accepted by the mayor. So, no, we're very, very liberal here. But now councillor Schaefer is. Councillor Wiggins agrees, I agree. And I haven't heard from three councillors yet. I think we are not. Okay, I thank you. Goldwax for expressing. Yep.
Do you hear me, Mister Mayor?
Yes, I can.
If you want to, my position, I thought that you were very comfortable to accept question from you anonymous up until now. And all of a sudden, something changed. Can I get more information? Why now is changed? Because my, I'm totally independent, I have no issue, I am the most transparent. Everybody knows my opinion from the get go. So what is the changes now from your position from before? That's all I, if you convince me, I will give you my vote on that. I have absolutely no reason not to.
Okay, councillor El Fassi, very simple. Up until now, nobody had questioned this amongst council. Councillor Schaefer just said, I think people should give their names and shouldn't be anonymous. Councillor Wigginsburg agree with it, I agree with it. So if you agree with.
I heard Goldwax giving the argument why it merited to keep people anonymous. So if you can give me one more argument, I heard everything you said, give me one more argument and I'll give you my vote.
Because people should be afraid to, if they want to say something. First of all, when you have anonymous, you don't even know how many people. It could be one anonymous person asking repeated questions over and over and over. Second of all, if people want to be anonymous and yet raise an issue. This, I've sixteen years I've been mayor, numerous people write to me about this issue or that issue. And I always protect their anonymity, always. I often forward emails, but I remove all traces of the person who sent me the original email. I believe in protecting people who identify whatever issue. I have no problem with that, but when you have this anonymous business, it doesn't matter whether they're residents or not. But it does matter that we have some ideas of the same person asking the same types of questions over and over and over. You know, in other towns, you can't even ask more than three questions on the same topic, different people or not, that's the way it works here. Fine, there are towns that have only one question period. Here we have two. Really, our bylaw already says you have to identify. But when half the council tells me they want it, yeah, we will start requiring it next meeting. So councillor Fassi, if I do, let me know and that'll be that.
Well, I tell you what, because I really have a lot of respect from what Michael Goldwax presented before. And I can relate to that. To be honest with you, up until today, I didn't see what Michael was saying until he just talked about all what's going on. So to me, quite honestly, I was not comfortable with all this anonymous. But after I hear what Michael said and other argument that can come up, it makes sense to me that I don't care. I mean, we're here, if you see a question that you're not comfortable with, just put it in the bin, don't even answer it. I think you should, if there is a question that you can answer, answer, otherwise just put it in the bin.
Well, I do, I do councillor Buttoning and Eddy want to say. I guess, yes.
No, that's fine. I basically, the question, in the previous iteration of our meetings when they were public, it was impossible to be anonymous because you had to stand up and go to a microphone. And so you couldn't be anonymous. So, but now that we have this kind of meeting, I have no problem with somebody who feels they have a need to be anonymous. I don't see any downside to it. So personally, I have no major, I have no, no reason to require somebody to identify themselves unless somebody can show, give me a reason why, as opposed to one in theory should never be afraid.
Respectfully, it's a moot point because anybody could just put in any name. So if you're going to require people to put names, they could just put John Smith and that'll be that.
I don't see a reason to invalidate a question because the person does not want to identify themselves.
Okay, fine. You've all weighed in, so I'm afraid we're going to continue with anonymous questions. It really doesn't bother me one way or the other, although I do agree, people shouldn't be afraid to put their names down. Anyway, moving right along, anonymous again, Mr. Or Miss Anonymous. Different topic. One second. Might we know when electronic online reservations for tennis will be available? Such a system has been used for a number of years at Jerry Parkin. Excellent question. Unlike Montreal, our IT apartment, it consists of one person. Nevertheless, the answer is July. We're expecting to have our online reservation system in July. Right now, it's already better than it used to be for both pool and tennis. Once things are entered, they're entered into a system and everybody can see it. So we've already moved one step in that direction. We now have just one more step to go and that is letting residents log in and book their times for tennis and I think probably for pool maybe coming as well. Okay. Leon El Fassi.
I was just replying to that question.
Okay. All right, which I see you've said more or less what I said. We're a couple, a couple of weeks away from having booking online. We're in a testing period, so I thank you for that addition. Okay, let me see. A comment from Mr. Or Miss Anonymous, this meeting is an embarrassment to our community. Thank you for your comment. Anonymous again, I want. Okay, I will read this. I don't want to change the English, so I'm going to read it exactly as it's typed. I, what is the process to have the mayor removed from office? There's an election on November seventh. And if you vote, if the majority of residents in the town vote for someone else who stands for election, that person will take over as mayor. That is the process, that is the only process other than if I myself decide to resign, I don't think that'll happen. Or if I miss ninety consecutive days without attending a council meeting and then don't show up for the next council meeting, I will automatically be, lose my job as mayor. And as far as I can see, that's really every possibility, but I'm happy to answer that question for you. And now, let me guess, it's anonymous again. Please post this meeting on the Facebook page so the city residents bear witness to the manner in which the mayor speaks to the councillors. Shameful, completely, Mister Mayor, you are out of turn. Why do I think I know who all these anonymous people are? Thank you for your comment. If the mayor was even, do I have to bother? Anonymous. If the mayor was even handed, there would be no need for anonymous. As I've mentioned, I've dealt with, I can't tell you how many different issues and problems from residents. And everybody was treated exactly the same way, including some residents that I know are not on my side. Every resident gets treated exactly the same fair, even-handed way, I can assure you. Okay. Okay, this one is not anonymous. It is. By the way, the question about Belsa Circle is from Larry Rinsler. Catherine Gann, my goodness, this is difficult to watch. In live meetings, people identify themselves. Which I gather is a suggestion that people should, well, you know, I agree. But I will follow the dictates of the majority of council. Anonymous, thank you moderator for answering my question on tennis reservations. Good news. Okay. And on that, we have wrapped up question period. And I know that some attendees, and we're up to thirteen attendees, perhaps want to go watch the hockey game. I'm not encouraging you to do so, but I'm just saying that's taking place. Okay. So we're on item three point oh, on motion of councillor.
Buttoning.
I'm sorry, Buttoning, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It is resolved to amend the agenda as proposed in order to add thereto the following items. Seven point nine, approval of the payment for the renewal of the town of Hampstead's liability insurance portfolio for the year twenty one, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Anyone oppose? Okay, nobody opposed. Three point one, adoption of the amended agenda on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor Buttoning. It is resolved that the agenda of the regular council meeting is hereby adopted as amended. Anyone opposed? And then that brings us to the parliamentary monthly report. And we'll start with community services.
Mister Mayor, if I could just make a quick comment, I just want to apologize in advance. My camera, my internet connection is not great, so I may be turning my camera off to try and get streaming of audio. So I apologize if the residents can't see me all the time.
Okay, you, you're a little dark, but that's fine. And I know you can hear us, so it's good. So councillor Wigginsburg. Community services.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to be here again. I hope everybody is staying safe and enjoying the nice weather and getting out. I hope everybody who can't get vaccinated is getting vaccinated. And let's hope things start getting better slowly, especially as the summer comes. So basically, there are a few things that are coming up. There's not, they're still, because of COVID, we're still very slow on starting things to make sure that we follow everything the government is suggesting. Right now, on July eleventh, we're planning to do a cupcake bath bombs at the park at ten thirty AM. And then we're also planning to do art in the park on Tuesday nights. It's a free art program in Hampstead Park. It will be at six fifteen. And it will be July sixth, thirteenth, August third and the tenth. There will be, I'm very happy to say there will be a day camp this summer. There will be multiple sections for junior and for senior side. Since we have more junior campers, we have decided to open up four groups on the junior side and one group on the senior side. And doing this, we're able to accommodate everyone on the waiting list with a spot, so I'm very happy to say that. The dog run has water and is connected and it's all open to the dogs, so that's good for the dogs. And I'm very pleased to say the bathrooms in Hampstead Park are now open to the public. And there's a monitor who's overseeing the cleaning and disinfecting, and I think that's great news for people who want to use the park. The Hampstead Day has been pushed to the fall, hoping that this summer we will be able to have some type of outdoor activity. Hopefully, all this positiveness will continue and as more and more people get vaccinated. We are hoping that maybe movie, a movie in the park to be held in July and September. But this is again based on government COVID guidelines. And the concert series, right now, we're waiting to hear what we are able to do. We're hoping that maybe we might be able to do a few of them. Definitely would not be able to do as all, do as all as we were hoping. The bands are ready to go if we think and feel that it's safe and that the government guidelines allow it. And for the time being, that is my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Eddy.
Okay, quick updates. We had the twenty twenty year end audit was completed. It was a very strange year because of COVID. As per the financial statements, we had a three million dollar surplus. But that always needs to be looked at differently carefully. You can't just say three million. Of the three million dollar surplus, a million of that was our PTI line, which is built into the budget. The only reason it shows up as surplus is because it's only at the end of the year do we attribute it to the PTI. So it seems like surplus, but it's not really surplus. Another million of that was a Quebec grant to offset COVID costs. And another hundred and thirty four thousand of that was a Montreal grant to offset COVID costs. So the net real, I mean, the one million and the one hundred and thirty four thousand are part of our surplus. But the non kind of, or the more recurring events come to about eight hundred and sixty six thousand if we account for the PTI line and the, and the, and the grants, the extra grants for COVID. So it's eight hundred and sixty six thousand, which is about three percent of our overall budget. And the big differences there were an extra ninety eight thousand dollars in permits, a hundred and ninety five thousand dollars in transfer tax, more than we expected because prices are high, are higher than usual. And unfortunately, we had an extra forty three thousand dollars in arrears interest because people are having, had, some people had a harder time paying the taxes. But that forty three thousand dollars in arrears interest is higher even though we decreased our interest on arrears in order to help people with, with the COVID payments. Accumulated surplus we're looking at was six point nine million. If you take out the, about two million in. If you take out the, uh, about two million in, uh, PTI, you're about, uh, four point nine million. So roughly five million, um, as of now for accumulated surplus. And then our total debt was five point eight million, which breaks down as, uh, into two portions. That which is our own, which we have to finance, and that which is provincial government. So our own debt is four point eight million, and the provincial side is nine hundred and eighty four thousand. Um, there's a four point eight million is what we have to finance, and this is prior to the twenty twenty one, uh, PTI, uh, which adds back another four, uh, so another two million there, so we're about, uh, four point eight. But it's, uh, six, six point eight million, uh, roughly. Um, so that's, that's with regards to the finance. And then the public works yard where, um, all the legal delays for the public works yard have, have, uh, expired. Um, we're pretty much ready to go out to SCAO for the sale of the, uh, portion of the public works yard. Uh, the servitude has been signed. Um, we've got meetings ongoing with the architect. Uh, actually, there's one tomorrow morning with regards to redesign, or new design for the new public works building on the other side. Um, and, uh, also, we're looking at, uh, plans for extra storage for CSR at Hampstead Park. So these are all things that are going on simultaneously. It's, it's a bit of, uh, a soup, but it's, it's being done. Um, and, uh, that's about, I mean, there's a lot more as far as the details of the audit, but I'm, I'm not going to get too much into that. Um, just give you kind of the, the bottom line numbers. Um, anything else? Oh, and there are, uh, that, yeah, that's pretty much it. For, uh, for finance and then public work yard report.
Thank you very much, uh, councillor Ofasi.
He's muted. Leon, you're muted.
Yeah, you, you're muted.
Yes, thank you. Sorry, sorry about that. Thank you, Mister Mayor. So the report for tennis is actually, um, quite, uh, positive. After, uh, rocking, uh, start of the season with, uh, the Guillermo Fiasco, um, I can report to you and to the resident that, uh, the tennis club is, is actually doing quite well. Uh, from all fronts, is it from, uh, the way the club is running, the courts, the staff, the pros, everything is, seems to be really, really going well this year. And that also reflects on the membership. Uh, as we discussed before privately in the caucus meeting, we have right now about two hundred and eleven members, and out of them, uh, a hundred and, close to a hundred and forty, one hundred and thirty five are Hampstead resident. And the rest are non-resident. And, uh, we still have capacity for new members, which, uh, I thank most councillors and everybody to agree to open the, uh, membership to non-resident going forward. Uh, so that said, the league is, uh, uh, the league is also going very, very well on Wednesdays. Actually, Greg, uh, gets a record number of interest to play in the league on Wednesdays. Uh, and that is actually a very, very good sign, because that's what gets a club going. Uh, as for the question we was asked before about reservation online, so as the mayor reported before, and I also replied on, uh, to the, uh, guy who asked the question, uh, uh, that we are not far away from having that reservation online, uh, will be on our website. Uh, that's for that. Um, uh, we also are now in a process, uh, in a final stage of, uh, the, uh, the, uh, documents for the PTI for the tennis project. As you may know, all the residents are pretty much aware now that, uh, we're going to invest quite a bit of money this year to deal with the, the court surface and the irrigation and completely new lights in Hampstead Tennis. And hopefully, we can add to that a little bit of renovation of the rec, their reception area. And I say hopefully, because I hope at one point we'll come to an agreement, because there is also a note that Richard Sun wanted to share with all of us that is there on the report. That said, uh, so we're now not far from having that document ready. And then, uh, uh, the town will issue that, uh, a, a call for tender, so we can have this project going off the ground, hopefully in September. Uh, and the last, uh, item I can add is the, uh, the, uh, the staff this year, our staff in recreation, they're unbelievable. I want to give a great, uh, uh, work, word of encouragement to both Chandra and Ian for doing tremendous job with the tennis this year. And, uh, they're really are on top of everything. And everybody in tennis are very happy with both of them. So on that note, I'd like to thank them from, on my behalf, and I'm sure on behalf of the entire council. That's about my report on tennis. And on the strategic development, it's only a comment. And it's not a debate, it's just a comment that I made, and I made it before. And I'd like to repeat it now, uh, with regards to the, uh, the public zone redevelopment. I'm, again, I repeat it, I'm on board, I support, I voted for it. But I feel if we've been working seven years and more to be ready to sell the, this piece of land, we can wait another three, four, five months to, to put it for sale. I think it'll be res, uh, uh, morally responsible for us to act carefully and only put that piece of land for sale after, uh, for the new council that will be elected by November. That's my opinion. I know I am in a minority, but at least I put it out there. Everybody knows me, what I have in my heart, I have in my mouth. So that's my position. If you guys vote to go ahead, I bless and I, I pray for a success for the town and for all of us. That's all. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. I just want to mention one thing. Uh, you mentioned the number two hundred and eleven, uh, members for tennis, but it's not exactly right. Uh, first of all, I think it's, those numbers are approximately a week old, so the new numbers would be higher. Secondly, the two eleven is season passes. Uh, I believe something like nine, more than that, over a hundred of those are, um, family memberships with an average of at least three members per family. Uh, so the true number of tennis members is much higher than two eleven. Uh, it would be somewhere between three and four hundred members who are, uh, who are signed up and enjoying the tennis courts, which is great. It's probably somewhat similar to, uh, to last year and the year before. And also, as councillor Ofasi mentioned, effective today, in fact, uh, we are now accepting non-residents who wish to get season passes, even if they were not members in twenty twenty and twenty nineteen. That was our previous rule, you had to be members in twenty twenty or twenty nineteen. Now, it doesn't matter with, to the same rules we had before COVID. Uh, so we welcome everybody. And, uh, as councillor Ofasi said, it so far is proving to be a great season. And I want to also acknowledge and thank, uh, Chandra and Ian. Uh, as, uh, was pointed out quite correctly, they are doing a magnificent job. Uh, and not just with tennis, with the pool as well. And I, I'm sure when the day camp starts later this month, the same will be true there too. Okay, moving on, councillor Goldwax.
Um. Thank you very much, Mister Mayor. So, uh, a few of my portfolios, uh, uh, number one, I would talk, is public works. I'd like to, or gladly report, there's been no water main breaks in the past reporting period. Uh, this is, uh, due to the excellent work that the, we've done over the past, uh, fifteen, sixteen years of relining and revamping our, our water lines. Uh, I recall in our, uh, little, uh, community meeting we had this past week, uh, councillor Edery had mentioned that, uh, in the first and second mandate, that's all we were reporting, or is number of water main breaks and, and damages and, and insurance claims that went up. So I'm glad to see that the fruits of our labor are paying off. The green team must start pair the water, the beds for plantation, flowers be expected and will be planted shortly. Uh, planning, as already discussed in the report, planning preparation and cleanup public works yard is ongoing for the sale. Um, accord, uh, Aqua Data has done analysis, and some of our water valves are not functioning, which would cause problems if there is a water main break. So public work in conjunction with an engineer undertaking, uh, plans to replace defective valves over the summer. As well, public works verifying infrastructure in a public works yard to verify functionality. Vehicle maintenance is ongoing and going well. Uh, our recycling contractor, uh, we do, um, obviously contract garbage collection and recycling out. And of course, we do, uh, take complaints and comments from residents seriously. Uh, and, uh, we've had to sometimes follow the contractor or follow up on, uh, issues. And, um, happily or unhappily, we've had to actually find the contractor for non-compliance with the, uh, recycling. So, um, if there is something that you see amiss, please let us know, and we will go back to the, uh, recycling or garbage contractor. Uh, we are, um, going out to in the next couple of weeks, uh, requests for tender for the roads and sidewalks. So there's going to be a major, um, uh, investment of roads and sidewalk, and the tender will go out in about a week or two. Um, public works, of course, vaccines are, um, uh, rolling out as, uh, councillor Wigginsburg mentioned. Uh, we, uh, vaccines are rolling out to the younger individuals. So as more and more people are getting vaccinated, it's making the management of the scheduling of the public works crews, uh, their shifts and their ability to work a number of people together a lot easier. Uh, and of course, it helps curtail any spread of this disease. Uh, just a couple of points on IT, and I'd like councillor, uh, Budning to talk about some more. We are, uh, as already stated by councillor Ofasi and the mayor, um, we are looking to get that tennis, uh, online tennis program, uh, launched, which make a lot easier. The same thing with the new website, which will be up and running in a couple of weeks, uh, the revamped website, um, uh, come, um, an application for suggestions and complaints as well can be done online as well. And of course, like I said, uh, the website that's coming up very shortly. Um, the other portfolio I have is seniors. And although the vaccines are rolling out, people are still very susceptible and to transmitting contracting COVID nineteen. I know personally of, uh, three seniors residents with, uh, and long-term care facilities that had, uh, two, uh, uh, three facilities had major outbreaks, uh, where multiple residents were either, uh, infected and or hospitalized, um, even though they received a second vaccine. I will say gladly, uh, it was not the Waldorf or the site that I manage, it was other ones. But that being said, uh, just because you're vaccinated, it does not mean you, uh, stop following directives of social distancing, washing hands and wearing your mask. So I urge you, even if you have the second vaccine, people are still susceptible to either contracted or to, uh, transmit. Uh, in the past twenty four hours, there are three new cases in Hampstead. Uh, lastly, uh, as you see, I'm wearing orange and my background has been changed to honor the, um, the honor of the, the students. Unfortunately, the students that were found of the Can Loops First Nation Community that were in these graves, uh, like in many other cities, we lower our flags to have mass in our honor. And our fa, our thoughts and our prayers go out to the families, um, of that community and all indigenous peoples throughout Canada. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you very much. And, um, I agree with your comments, well, I agree with all your comments. But with respect to the residential school tragedy, uh, residents, uh, who want to read my message on the subject, uh, can go to the homepage of our website, and you will find a detailed message on that site. Um, councillor Budning is back, or at least we can see him, so.
Oh, I've, I've always been here, I'm just trying to, uh, get the stream going, uh, uninterrupted, so that's why I'm turning my camera off. Uh, I'll keep it relatively quick, uh, the month of May twenty twenty one, we had sixty nine permits that were issued from the urban planning department. Uh, last year in the month of May, there were thirty eight permits, but here's the kicker. Uh, eight point, uh, sorry, eight hundred seventy one thousand dollars of, uh, permitted work was issued in twenty twenty. In twenty twenty one, one point four million. So our residents continue to reinvest in their properties and, uh, you know, we're, we're glad to see that, uh, people are caring for their homes. And we can certainly see the construction ongoing in the community. Uh, year to date, a hundred and twenty eight permits were issued and a hundred and thirty four inspections were done this month, five hundred and forty nine to date. So our urban planning department continues to ensure that work is permitted and conforming to the permits, and that all, uh, work is being done safely and, uh, and in a, uh, appropriate manner. Uh, just to build upon what councillor Goldwax had mentioned, from an IT perspective, uh, we are continuing, uh, and, and as was alluded to in question period, build out the online tennis and, uh, pool booking system, so residents can, uh, can certainly look forward to that. As well, the, uh, new website is currently in development. Uh, the My Hampstead Portal, uh, residents are going to be able to access the water meter readers in very short order, where they will be able to input their, uh, the actual readings from their meters every single week moving forward. Uh, additionally, uh, the, the process is, uh, is being enhanced for permits for construction, uh, as well as a new functionality, which was discussed at a recent town hall, will be included, which is to file complaints for housing in multifamily dwellings, rentals and so forth. So we're continuing to improve that functionality and ensure that the My Hampstead Portal gives as much access and the best access to our residents as possible. Uh, quickly, from a communication standpoint, they are working on the revamping of the website. The urban planning department worked in coordination with communications department to create new flyers for, uh, regularly requested, uh, documents and, uh, information from the urban planning department. Social media wise, we continuing to post, uh, information and, uh, topics of interest on all our social media channels, uh, such that eleven thousand people viewed posts in our, of ours in the month of May, a thousand seven hundred of them reacted. So we're continuing to gain exposure on that front. And lastly, from a, uh, from a pool perspective, the pool is open for the twenty twenty one summer. I hope that our residents take advantage of that amazing, uh, service that we have. And I certainly wish all of our lifeguard CSR staff and everybody a safe, enjoyable, but as I said, that most importantly, safe summer. And to those residents that have pools in their backyards, please make sure that your gates are locked and that everything is as safe as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And finally, but not la, not least, but, uh, finally, councillor Shaffer.
You're taking my remark there, that's the one I use. Finally, but not the least. In any event, good evening, everyone. Um, I, my two portfolios consist of legal and also public security. I want to thank our town clerk, Major Pierre Tap, for his report on legal. And I am pleased to read it with, as follows. During this period, we had our regular assembly of the municipal council on May third and also a special council meeting on May twenty fifth. Both meetings were held virtually. Most of the clerk's work was done from his home office, except for a few days, which took place at my town hall office. As president of the elections, the clerk had to respond to many more questions from citizens regarding the upcoming elections in November twenty twenty one. And we have up to now five people who have expressed their interest in standing as a candidate in the said election. We have had discussions with our past suppliers for our procurement of equipment and professional resources in preparation for the upcoming election. In this regard, we have studied the new regulation relating to the holding of municipal elections in the special period of the pandemic, specifically about voting by correspondence. Mrs. Brenda Ver, Varden was sworn in as secretary for the municipal election. She will assist me in my work as president of elections. We have had a few meetings and training sessions for this purpose. We are making our arrangements to allow advanced polls for an additional day, that is on Saturday, October thirtieth. And voting will also be possible at the office of the president of the elections on November three. Citizens will therefore have four days instead of two to exercise their right to vote in addition to the po, to the possibility of postal voting for people aged seventy and over. The whole thing requires a greater organization, but we will be ready. We also had several exchanges with the clerks of other cities regarding the organization of these elections. We followed the development of government. We followed the development of government guidelines on the coronavirus crisis daily. We still discuss with different clerks from other towns regarding this delicate situation, and we are in contact with the clerks of other cities and we share important logistics information. We are closely monitoring the modifications of the subdivision bylaw because it is necessary in order to proceed with calls for tenants for the sale of municipal land adjoining the town garage. The public notices were published and citizens had until May twentieth at four P M. to send, to send their comments to town council. No written document was received on this file. The town clerk was also, was always available to respond to requests from the various services of this valley, whether by email, web conference, call or direct calls. We had meetings with many subjects this month, including elections, town website, access to documents of the town, human resources topics, zoning, garage sale and minor derogations. More particularly, we have been in daily contact with the head of many of our departments to resolve the various situations requiring our expertise on a day to day basis. We worked in collaboration in all the, on the development of the agenda for all May's council meetings and its follow up. Thank you very much, Major Tap. This was a very well written report and I really appreciate it. I'm sure so does council. My other portfolio consists of public security. And at this moment, Mr. Mayor, I think speaking on behalf of council and yourself, I would like to congratulate Lieutenant Roberts and his team of public security officers for the magnificent job they performed during the particularly the two, the past two weeks or past three weeks, where there were threats and fears of our citizens for what was going on with the anti Semitic remarks, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, as we all know, uh, Lieutenant Roberts read, led the public security team and did a magnificent job. So on behalf of council and yourself, mayor, I like to extend kudos to Lieutenant Roberts. Uh, uh, Thierry Huel Jingra, the, uh, chief, as well as to all our public security officers, a great job well done. Um, for public security, Lieutenant Roberts wrote the following report. The COVID nineteen situation is still ongoing. However, the outlook for positive change can be felt among members of the team and residents. The public security team continues to adopt well to the ever changing provincial COVID restrictions. The team is preparing themselves for the spring summer period, which will include a bike patrol. Increase public security presence during the Shavuot due to anti Semitic acts and online postings. Increase presence in general throughout the town and in religious institutions. Overtime remains minimal at one hundred hours for the entire department from the period of January first to May fifteenth. The majority of the overtime is for constables to attend court to testify for bylaw tickets issued. I'm sure councillor Eddie would be satisfied with that as well. The low number of crime, either, uh, breaking and entering or or theft of property may be attributed to the COVID provincial government restrictions. Phone communications, including dispatch, had some difficulties on May eleventh, twenty twenty one, but was rapidly fixed by the contracted company. Between April sixteenth, twenty twenty one and May fifteenth, twenty twenty one, Hampstead constables went to court for a total of three cases. However, all three resulted in postponements. Training of employees continued with about five public security team members taking a baton handcuff and suspect control course on May fourteenth at the community center. Now, to just give you a brief outline, uh, not to go into too many details, I will give, uh, our residents and our council members the following information. In the month of May, two hundred and eighteen, uh, parking tickets were issued, which is an increase of over a hundred percent since in the month of April, two thousand twenty one, there were only a hundred and eleven tickets issued. As for bylaw tickets issued, there were only, uh, five as compared to the month of April, which had none. Construction, tickets for construction violations were only five tickets issued. No dog, no tickets for dog, for, for violations with respect to dogs, garbage, gardeners and or long grass. And, uh, all in all, I would, I would have to say that, um, our public security, I don't want to be redundant, but I have to repeat myself because it's so important that the public appreciate how fantastic our public security is. And kudos to them all, including Lieutenant Roberts and Chief Cherry Holzinger. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to, uh, give you these two reports, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you very much. I want to add one thing, though, that is important. And that is a crime January through, uh, May has been almost nonexistent. I won't say totally zero, but it's about as close to zero as we could possibly have had. And it is due to the curfew, the COVID curfew, um, and that's really the reason. Uh, but, uh, crime is going to come back. We don't have a lot of crime in Hampstead, even in the worst of times, nevertheless, it's not zero. And, uh, there was one recent break in at a home and the alarm wasn't on. So please, there are some very important things that you can do. We have a whole bunch of tips on our website, but some of the most important. Make sure your garage door is closed when you leave the house. Mine goes all the way down, doesn't bounce up. If the door is open, you're inviting a break in, I guarantee it. Make sure you put on the alarm. Almost everybody has an alarm system. Put it on even if you're leaving the house for five minutes. Uh, and, uh, the third thing with respect to car thefts, uh, I don't know how many people know at this point, more and more do. But if you leave your car outside and has one of those electronic keys, uh, thieves can pick up the signal if your key is inside your house, your car is outside. They can pick up the signal and drive away with your car. Unless you keep the keys in a pouch or, uh, which you can get from Amazon or a coffee, empty coffee tin. Uh, there are ways to prevent them from picking up the signal. But if you don't do it, the thieves are going to steal the signal and your car. We even have a video of it happening here in Hampstead, a real case. So those three things alone will greatly reduce your risk of crime. Again, I agree with councillor Eddy. Our public security is magnificent. In my opinion, the best on the island.
Councillor Schaefer.
Hi councillor Schaefer. Hi about that councillor Schaefer. I agree with councillor Schaefer. Public security is the best uh, on the whole island as far as I'm concerned. Uh, the stories that we both know that have happened over and over are just incredible, but you have to help us. So take those precautions and you will not be the victim of the crime. Okay, uh, moving on, we can now move on to the agenda. Let me just get my, uh, let me just get to the right spot. Coming up. Oops. Item five point O. Uh, adoption of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on May third and the special council meeting held on May twenty fifth. Um, motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It is resolved that the minutes of the regular council meeting held on May third, twenty twenty one and of the special council meeting held on May twenty fifth, twenty twenty one are hereby approved as submitted. Anyone opposed? Nope. And that brings us to. Uh, okay. Seven point one. Adoption of bylaw one thousand and two dash two on motion of councillor.
Schaefer. Goldwax.
Councillor Schaefer is seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved to approve by law number one thousand and two dash two entitled by law modifying the pedestrian operations zoning by law number one thousand two dash one. Anyone opposed? That's adopted. Which brings us to seven point two. Adoption of bylaw seven ninety five dash ten on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Seconded by councillor Goldwax. Is resolved to approve by law number seven nine five dash ten entitled by law modifying by law number seven nine five dash two regarding nuisance. Anyone opposed? No. I do want to mention what that one is about. There are two changes there that are important. One, um, noisy landscaping work on weekdays can no longer begin at seven A M. It can start earlier than eight A M. And the other change request, any residents, is that June first, which has already passed through September thirtieth, uh, gardeners can, no one can use gas powered leaf blowers. No more gas powered leaf blowers. As soon as I get the resolution, I will sign it. Uh, it should be in a day or two. And from that point on, we will not have to listen to those gas powered leaf blowers. The gas powered lawn blowers are still allowed, lawn mowers, but the gas powered leaf blowers, no more. Uh, okay. And that brings us to, uh, seven point three. Yep. Uh, uh, this is adoption of bylaw ten twenty dash one on motion of councillor.
Schaefer. Goldwax.
Uh, Schaefer is seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved to approve by law number ten twenty entitled by law modifying by law number ten twenty on contract management. Anyone opposed? Okay, no one's opposed. And that one has to do with, uh, with the Quebec government asking us to give priority to Quebec government, companies, priority, but not exclusively. Plusivity to Quebec companies when purchasing things or giving out contracts. Seven point four is no motion. No motion was given by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. Uh, that draft by law number ten thirty one entitled by law on the use and supply of potable water and administration of used water through its services will be submitted to council for adoption. And all council members have received a copy of draft by law number ten thirty one. And the motion dispensed with the reading of said by law was made. Anyone, uh, sorry, it's a motion. Okay. Uh, seven point five is the adoption of the first draft of that by law. On motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer is seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is, it is resolved to approve the first draft of by law number ten thirty one entitled by law on the use and supply of potable water and administration of used water through its services. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. And that brings us to. Okay, uh.
The end of court settlement.
Seven point six, um. Okay, on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Uh, Schaefer is seconded by councillor.
But.
I'm sorry. Eddy. Okay, Eddy. It is resolved. Um, that the town clerk and in his absence, the assistant town clerk be authorized to sign on behalf of the town the document entitled mutual release full file discharge and transaction in superior court file five hundred dash seventeen dash one oh three two seven two dash one eight six of Quebec, a copy of which is attached to the present resolution. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. And that brings us to seven point seven. Approval of payment, uh, on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer is seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It was resolved, it is resolved that the municipal council accepts the payment of the share of the town of Hampstead in the guarantee fund of our group, which is established with all cost in the amount of twenty nine thousand two hundred and forty dollars and twelve cents, as it appears on the invoice one four nine two nine five of U M Q. Anyone opposed? Okay, it's adopted. Seven point eight. Uh, I will just announce that each member of council having received a copy, the town clerk deposits the certificate following the registration procedure for voting on the bylaw number one thousand two dash two entitled by law modifying the pedestrian operations zoning by law number one thousand two dash one. The council takes note of the deposit of said certificate by the town clerk. That means is that, um, we made a couple of minor exemptions so that we could go ahead and sell the, um, uh, half of the public works yard. And nobody asked for a register. Uh, so there will be no register or referendum on that issue, uh, which is not surprising, given that the people who were eligible live in the area and should be extremely happy of this project. Okay, seven point nine approval of payment for the renewal of the town of Hampstead's liability insurance portfolio for the year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. On motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer is seconded by councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy. Uh, it was, it is resolved that the town council approves the payment of twenty five thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and sixty two cents to B F L Canada Risk and Insurance Inc. for the renewal of the town's liability insurance portfolio for the year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Anyone opposed? No, that brings us to eight point one. Uh, I will just note that each member of council having received a copy, the town clerk deposits the minutes of the regular planning advisory committee meeting held on May tenth, twenty twenty one. The council takes note of the deposit of said minutes by the town clerk. And moving on, we will start our urban planning items. Um, which we have quite a few. Eight point two, fifty eight twenty one Ferncroft. Um. Okay, on motion of councillor.
Bundning.
Bundning seconded by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg. It is resolved that the request authorized an addition for detached single family dwelling located at fifty eight twenty one uh, Ferncroft and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on May tenth, twenty twenty one is conditionally approved as recommended by the P A C, provided that the walk in closet must be eliminated on the upper level. The two dormers on the front facade must be separated by a roof section. The polyetherine panels are not acceptable. More conventional material must be presented to urban planning for approval. The color of the dormers must be proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number one thousand and one dash two and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site planning and architectural integration program by law number seven seven five. Anyone opposed? The only comment there for people listening is you can see how detail oriented our planning and advisory committee is. Uh, eight point three, uh, concerning, uh, fifty six forty two Queen Mary Road. Um, okay. I'll have a comment on this in a minute, but first, it was proposed by councillor.
Bundning.
Bundning, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. Um, and resolved that at the request for four minor exemptions, the zoning by law number one thousand one dash two for the property located at fifty six forty two Queen Mary, lot number two oh eight nine four six eight, sonary one is refused. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. I just want to comment in case the owner is listening. These minor exemptions relate to a previous version of the plan. The most recent version of the plan, um, which was worked out with our head of urban planning, uh, will probably be approved by the council. Um, but there is a different minor exemption that is required. Uh, public notice for that will probably go up in a day or two. And after two weeks, we'll probably have a special council meeting, uh, where I anticipate adopting, uh, uh, that, uh, minor exemption and then the project will proceed. Um, okay. And that brings us to eight point four concerning thirty Albion. It was proposed by councillor.
Bundning.
Bundning seconded by councillor. Budnay is seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. And resolved that the request to authorize a second floor addition for detached single family dwelling located at 30 uh Schuman Albion and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on May 10, 2020 is approved as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No. And I think I can add that that's a very nice uh project, unique and nice. Um, okay, we come to 11 Heath Road. On motion of councillor.
Budnay.
Budnay, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. It is resolved that the request to authorize the construction of a new detached single family dwelling located at 11 uh Schuman Heath and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on May 10, 2021 is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project only partially meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and meet the prescribed standards in the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? And that's adopted. 8.6 concerns 195 Finchley. Um, it was proposed by councillor.
Budnay.
Budnay is seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax and resolved that the request for three minor exemptions to zoning bylaw number 1001-2 for the property located at 195 Finchley, lot number 2089164, zone RA2 is approved. Um, anyone opposed? Okay, no one's opposed. I should mention that um there are a number of minor exemption requests. And um we have, with one exception, we have received no interventions from uh concerned parties. So if I've forgotten to mention that for each one, I'm mentioning it now. When we get to the one where there was an objection, uh, I will mention it. We're not there yet. Okay, it brings us to 8.7 178 Wexford. Hmm. Uh. This is one that I really wanted to discuss with uh council. And unfortunately, we didn't have a chance uh during our caucus meeting. Uh, um, so I will explain. It's okay, I'll explain for the public. Uh, this is um. Oh, no, I see that. This is actually, this is not a minor exemption. This is the actual project. Uh, okay, now we can continue, sorry. Okay, it was proposed by councillor.
Budnay.
Budnay is seconded by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Goldwax, yeah, okay. And resolved that the request to authorize a second floor addition for a detached single family dwelling located at 175 Wexford and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on May 10 is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project does not meet the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and meets the prescribed standards of the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No, okay. Okay, 8.8 having to do with number two Gaeton. Uh, on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Budnay, I think first. Um, it is resolved that the request to authorize facades and modifications for a detached single family dwelling located to Schuman Gaeton and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on March 8, 2021 is conditionally approved as recommended by the PAC, provided that wider windows. Uh, wider windows uh should be used in order to improve the design and the masonry frames around the proposed larger windows must match with the existing masonry frames with uh urban planning approval. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, stopped it. That brings us to 8.9 49 Granville. Okay, this one, there was an objection filed. Um, and um, and the council has uh noted. And now we will move on with the actual resolution. It was proposed by councillor.
Budnay.
Goldwax.
By councillor Budnay, seconded by councillor Goldwax and resolved that the request for two minor exemptions to zoning bylaw number 1001-2 for the property located at 49 Schuman Granville, lot number 2088897, zone RA2 is approved. Okay, anyone opposed? No, okay, that's adopted. 8.10 having to do with 5801 Ferncroft. Okay, it was proposed by councillor.
Budnay.
Budnay is seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. Um, and resolved that the request for three minor exemptions to zoning bylaw number 1001-2 for the property located at 5801 Schuman Ferncroft, lot number 2089244, zone RA2 is approved. Uh, anyone opposed? That's adopted. Brings us to 8.11 having to do with 5719 Queen Mary. Okay, it was proposed by councillor.
Budnay.
I'm going to say, I'm going to say second to myself if the author, if the actual resolution is, is corrective, because what I understand, we're not refusing it, we're accepting it.
Um.
This is, this is the, 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 the request with the wall due to the wheelchair.
Ah.
Uh, is that, is that the one councillor Goldwax? I thought that was a different, I thought that was a different house on the other side of the street.
No, this is the one corner Queen Mary unless I'm, unless I'm.
I, I, I thought you were, I, I thought you were referring to a house on the other side of that corner.
No, it's the corner house. It is the corner house. I'm just going to go to the plans on the expanded package, bear with me. It's eight.
He, he, I, I want to point out, we didn't have a chance, I don't think. I'm not sure if we had a chance to discuss this in caucus. But there are key minor exemption requests over here. Uh, and yes, I do think this is the one with uh the wheelchair issue. Uh, one of them was recommended by the PAC to refuse and one of them was recommended by the PAC to approve. Uh, but council of course can approve both if we wish.
Uh, I, I'm just looking at the 811 on the expanded package. Uh, I'm looking at the drawing 5719 or maybe I'm mistaken on the. Oh, I know, a second, 5719 is a corner of fleet. No, that is the one. That is the one. That is the one with the project being done by Northstone where the homeowner needs access for a wheelchair for uh to get into the back.
Okay, no. So I'm okay if we approve both. Uh, one of the two, as the mayor had mentioned, was to be approved by uh the PAC anyways and council. So the other one is certainly an extenuating circumstance with the handicap access.
Okay, there you go. So I, I'm going to assume that that's what the council wants. So I'll read them that way. If somebody doesn't want, you'll need to object. Okay, we're at um, let me get back to an 811. Okay, 5719 Queen Mary, first of two minor exemptions, two separate resolutions. Um, on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
It is resolved that the request for the minor exemptions to zoning bylaw number 1001-2 for the property located at 5719 uh Schuman Queen Mary, lot number 2089455, zone RA1 is approved. Anyone opposed? Okay, so it's adopted. The next one is the same address, but a second minor exemption. The, one of them had to do with the green space between the walkway and the driveway and the other one has to do with the width of the driveway, I think. Okay, um, it says the other one on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg, I think. Okay, um, I resolve the request for my exemptions zoning bylaw number 1001-2 for the property located at 5719 Schuman Queen Mary, lot number 2089455, zone RA1 is approved. Anyone opposed? Okay, so we've, we've approved those things. They really are minor exemption and they are very extenuating circumstances. Okay, 813 is 30 Merton on motion of councillor. Motion of councillor.
Budnay.
Budnay, seconded by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg. Uh, it is resolved that the request to authorize facade modifications for a detached single family dwelling located at 30 uh Berkin Crescent and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on April 12, 2021 is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project does not meet the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. And that brings us to 814 having to do with uh 5658 Harrow. It's minor exemption and um, and there were no interested parties commenting. So on motion of councillor.
Budnay.
Budnay is seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. It is resolved that the request for a minor exemption to zoning bylaw number 1001-2 for the property located at 5658 Schuman Harrow, lot number 200, sorry, 2090104, zone RA, RB4 is approved. Anyone opposed? No. That's adopted and that brings us to 8.15 23 Ellerdale. More minor exemptions and again, no interested parties. Uh, it was proposed by councillor.
Budnay.
Budnay is seconded by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer. Uh, and resolved that the request for two minor exemptions to zoning bylaw number 1001-2 for the property located at 23 Schuman Ellerdale, lot number 2088725, zone RA1 is approved. Anyone opposed? That's adopted. And that brings us to 8.165 Northcote. And it was proposed by councillor.
Budnay.
Budnay is seconded, seconded by councillor Goldwax. Um, and resolved that the request for two minor exemptions to zoning bylaw number 1001-2 for the property located at 5 Schuman Northcote, lot number 2089090, zone RA1 is refused. Anyone opposed? No, adopted. 8.17 91 Stratford. On motion of councillor.
Sorry, I was on mute, Budnay.
Budnay, seconded by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg. Um, it is resolved that the request to authorize the construction of a new detached single family dwelling located at 91 Schuman Stratford and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on April 12, 2021 is deferred as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project does not meet the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No, okay, no one's opposed. I will mention, this has been here a few times. There is certain unique things about this project. Uh, our planning department is doing additional research and uh we hope to have some type of recommendation so we can move on with this file and some other similar files that haven't necessarily reached us yet, but we know they're coming. 8.18 is 14 Merton Crescent. Uh, and I think I'll have a comment on this one as well. Uh, but first let's do the business. It was proposed by councillor.
Budnay.
Budnay is seconded by councillor. Hmm. Seconded by councillor. I need a seconder. Well, we can't have the motion if.
Sorry, it's mute, Etteri.
Seconded by councillor, okay. Um, and resolved that the request for a minor exemption to zoning bylaw number 1001-2 for the property located at 14 Merton Crescent, lot number 2088911, zone RA1 is refused. Did he want to post? Okay, now I do add. I believe that um the owner over here is going to come up with another proposal that does not require a minor exemption and will be granted a permit because if there's no minor exemption, uh, the permit will be issued. In fact, the permit may have already been issued for all I know. Uh, so this one won't be coming back anymore, I don't think. Okay, um, 8.19 7 Kilborn. I believe councillor Schaefer wants to.
Yes, uh, I'd like this, 7 Kilborn is the resident of my son Ian Schaefer and therefore I will not participate in the vote.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so for everybody else, it was proposed by councillor.
Budnay.
Budnay is seconded by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg. Uh, um, and resolved that the request for the two minor exemptions to zoning bylaw number 1001-2 for the property located at 7 Schuman Kilborn, lot number 2088888, zone RA1 is approved. Anyone opposed? Okay, so that's adopted.
I'd just like to make a note. Or is that, I'd just like to make a note that um the reason we're approving this is this is something that's part of a, a package of minor derogation, like changes to minor derogations that we're making. So given that we're going to be getting rid of a lot of things that currently require minor derogation requests, and this is one of those things, then we thought no point uh having, holding it up if it's something that we're planning on doing anyways. So we're streamlining, streamlining the whole minor derogation request process to get rid of a lot of stuff that really should not require minor derogations and this is one of those things.
Yeah, correct. And I was just going to say, since I've had a choppy internet, I, I normally explain every minor exemption, but it seems almost every file today did have a minor exemption request. A lot of them were rejected. The ones that were approved were uh to the most part just legalizing existing situations. Uh, there was one specific one where we allowed somebody to put a door for a basement unit uh under the driveway and, and in line with the perpendicular to the front facade instead of building it out. And uh otherwise it was uh allowing minor exemptions for things as councillor Etteri said are going to be changed in the bylaw in the very near future.
Yeah, and I was going to say all that, or at least some of that. Uh, just to make clear, we're not getting rid of um of things just so that we don't uh get minor exemption requests. That will be a happy outcome, but we are making. That will be a happy outcome, but we are making changes because the council has discussed these things or will finish discussing them. And have concluded that, um, that really our bylaw is too strict. He, well, the most recent one. Um, with the size of the banner, Westmount allows, I believe, twenty square meters in size. Uh, or maybe it's sixty. I can't remember. I don't know. It's sixty, sorry, sixty square meters. This particular request is for fifty. Our current bylaws is only ten. Well, obviously ten is just, uh, too small. And, and we know there are a number of cabanas that are larger than ten square meters. So taking both of those into consideration, looking at other bylaws, looking at what people have done, sometimes with minor exemptions, sometimes without. And putting it all together, uh, plus other factors is why we approve this request. Um, and many of the other changes will have to do with secondary front yards. Where people are, I mean, people like having corner lots, but there are some disadvantages and given what has happened in the town. We've concluded that we can liberalize the bylaw with respect to that. So there'll be quite a few, uh, changes based on what we've discovered. Um, and, and they, the, the result is many things will not require minor exemptions. Residents will not have to pay money for minor exemptions. The PAC won't have to spend time discussing them. But they're all reasonable adjustments, uh, uh, to our bylaws. So that's, that's coming up in hopefully the not too distant future. We're at nine point one approval of dispersments for the month of May on motion of councillor. Councillor Goldwax seconded by councillor.
Etteri.
Etteri. It is resolved that dispersments for the period from April sixteenth, twenty twenty one to May fifteenth, twenty twenty one in the total amount of one million fifty three thousand four hundred and thirty four dollars and seventy nine cents are hereby approved. Anyone opposed? Okay. Okay, nine point two. Payment of the second installment of the town's, um, Montreal Agglomeration, uh, fee, uh, taxes, whatever. On motion of councillor.
Etteri.
Etteri seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved that the town of Hampstead pays the second installment dated September first, twenty twenty one in the amount of five million six hundred and eighty seven thousand six hundred and fifty two dollars for its share of expenses. In the twenty twenty one operations of the Montreal Agglomeration. That treasurer certificate number twenty one oh one dated February first, twenty twenty one has been issued by the town treasurer. Attesting to the availability of funds to cover the described expenses. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. And brings us to nine point three. This time it's a payment to the CMM on motion of councillor.
Edery.
Goldwax.
Edery seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved that the town of Hampstead pays the second installment dated July fifteenth, twenty twenty one in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand eight hundred and forty eight dollars. For their share of expenses for the twenty twenty one operations of the CMM. Uh, that treasurer's certificate number twenty one oh two dated February first, twenty twenty one has been issued by the town treasurer. Attesting to the availability of funds to cover the described expenses. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. Nine point four appropriation of, uh, transfer of funds from unappropriate surplus. On motion of councillor.
Etteri and Schaefer.
Etteri seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved that the town approves the funds as further detail in the following table in the amount of. One million one hundred and thirty two thousand five hundred from the inappropriate surplus to appropriate surplus account five five nine nine two zero 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 zero. And the nature of the expense, I think we've agreed to call it a, uh, capital reserve fund. If I'm not mistaken, and the amount is one million one hundred and thirty two thousand five hundred dollars. Yeah, anyone opposed? No, okay, that's adopted. And that brings us to nine point five. I'll just announce in accordance with section one oh five dash point two of the season towns act, the town treasurer hereby deposited the financial report. And the external audit is report for the twenty twenty fiscal year. It's just an announcement. Uh. Uh, dear, nine point five A. Hmm. My pack is, it seemed to have, but does somebody have nine point five? Oh, no, that's just the report. Okay, never mind, never mind. Ten point one. Uh, granting of a contract on motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. Seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved that the following quotation for the following contract being is hereby approved. The hold is mildly delineated hereunder. It goes to. One six oh six seven six Canada Inc., uh, which is Pepinier Massous, uh, for the supply of trees. Eighty five thousand seven five dollars with taxes. It comes to ninety eight thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty one cents. Um, anyone opposed? That's adopted. Um. Eleven point one. Okay, it's, uh, approval of hiring. It was proposed by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. And resolve to approve the permanent hiring of Mr. Danny Oliver. Oh, sorry, Mr. Danny Oliver Rosero as public security officer, subject to the usual conditions and in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP Local four two nine. And the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? No.
Mister Mayor, I would like to tell the public that Danny Rosero is a great addition to our public security team.
Okay, and I know you've elaborated on that in caucus as well. Okay. Um, Mini, you gave us more details. Okay, great. Uh, okay, we're at eleven point two approval of the hiring list of white collar student employees. It was proposed by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg seconded by councillor.
Budning.
Budning. And resolve that the town council approves the hiring of white collar student employees detailed on the list from the community services and recreation department. The hiring is subject to the usual conditions and in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP Local four two nine and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. Um, and that brings us to eleven point three approval hiring list of blue collar auxiliary, uh, employees for, uh, community services. It was proposed by councillor.
Wigginsburg.
Wigginsburg seconded by councillor Budning. Okay. Yeah, okay, and resolve that the town council approves, approves the hiring of blue collar auxiliary employees. Detailed on the list from the community services and regulation department. The hiring is subject to the usual conditions. And in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP Local three oh one and the town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? No, and that brings us to fourteen point three. Um, would someone like to move adjournment? Motion of councillor. Goldwax seconded by councillor. Okay, motion of councillor Goldwax seconded by councillor Schaefer. It is resolved that the council meeting is adjourned. Anyone opposed? Okay, we are done. We have managed to lose all attendees except for four. Um, I'll take credit for that, maybe the hockey game. Um, councillors, do we resume caucus?
No.
Uh, or do we go to say when the hockey game is still on?
There's ten minutes left in the, in the third period. I'm not saying the score because councillor Budning doesn't want to hear it, but there's ten minutes left.
It's left. Okay, can we go back to caucus?
I have.
A brief caucus?
Nope.
Well, Richard, it does have stuff to discuss.
Well, we, we can be in in twenty minutes after the game. How about that?
No.
I don't care. I don't mind watching the end of the game. So I'll tell you what, we're leaving here.
Oh, Richard said nothing urgent. Richard said nothing urgent.
Nothing urgent. Okay.
No, just text.
In that. Okay, fine. In that case, we're done. No caucus. Everyone can watch the rest of the game. Uh, thank you, everybody for attending. Oh, we're up to one more attendee. Maybe the game's over. I don't know. Okay, thank you, everyone for coming and, uh, that wraps up our meeting. Be safe and bye, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Bye bye. Good night, everyone. Stay safe.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.